... and drive to wherever the meth lab is and spend either the next day or a good portion of it. It just is, it's a scourge that is rapidly coming upon us. I would like to just take one week in our recent history and discuss what's going on. And I purposely picked Christmas week because Christmas week is supposed to be a time of goodwill and cheer and friendship and enjoyment throughout the state. This is what happened Christmas week in our state. In Oxford County, we and the sheriff and MDEA arrested 15 people on conspiracy charges, the first time conspiracy charges were leveled on a drug case in the state history that I know of in Oxford County. Fifteen people, the kingpin from Lynn, Mass., of course, from our state. They were responsible for almost 18 pounds of heroin in Oxford County. $3.2 million. Fifteen people. That same week in Alfred, two men, 10 grams of heroin, 25 grams of cocaine, loaded 9-millimeter gun in which the state trooper had to wrestle them from. How about in Orland that week? Three people, one pound of heroin, $100,000 street value. 22 pounds of marijuana, $33,000 worth of street value. 750 oxycodone pills, $20,000 street value. 12 firearms. And of course, what everybody on Christmas week has laying around their house, $40,000 in cash. Christmas morning, you all know what happened in Manchester, two homicides, drug-related. And I purposely picked small communities. We're talking about Oxford County, Alfred, Orland, and Manchester. I didn't even go into Waterville, Portland, Augusta, Lewisburg. If this is happening in these very small communities, just think of what's happening in our, in our bigger areas. I wanted to say also that with this bill, we already have the money for this bill. It was transferred from other accounts. We do not need to replace the money for gambling control. It provides enough money for this biennium. And so that kind of addresses the money. The other thing I wanted to say, one fact is that we already have commitments from law enforcement and sheriff's agencies to fill the 10 MDEA agents which we are advertising for. So we have that commitment. I don't want to take much of your time, but I just wanted to paint that quick picture for you. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Representative Timberlake.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank your commission for being here today. I think you answered my question at the very end of your statement, but as I understood what you said, what you said was that you had found the money to fund these 10 agents through the rest of this cycle to the next biennium budget, and then you will have the money built into the baseline of the next biennium budget. Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, that is.
And that you have got most of these positions or got commitments to fill most of these positions so these people can hopefully in their future be going out into the field?
Right. We have commitments to the 10, 10 positions. Of course, I think, I think I should take a minute to explain how MDEA agents are hired because I think there's a great deal of confusion about that. State statute prohibits DPS from hiring direct hires for MDEA. The statute requires us to contract out to law enforcement agencies, municipal county, state agencies. We contract out for normally two years. And what happens is we pay that community the pay scale of a state police detective for hiring that person. That, that community, that law enforcement agency has to give up that officer for at least two years. And as a result, obviously, that creates a hardship there. They have to go, only what they do is go hire a new rookie, if you will, and then they have to put them through the academy and they have to train them. Many agencies, the town council, or the alderman, or the selectman, or the county managers are not enthralled with that process. They don't like giving up their good people away from their agency for a couple of years. However, that's the way it is. And the fact that the state is in the condition it is, is certainly demonstrated by the fact that we already have commitments to fill these 10 agencies. Now, it'll take a while. We have the interview. We want officers with at least five years on the street. This is very dangerous, very risky business. Going undercover and doing the work they do is very demanding and very difficult. So we need to hire people that we can put a lot of confidence in. I thank you for letting me do that, Representative Timberlake, because I think there's a great deal of confusion about how we get MDEA agents.
And just, and just one more question. And as I also understand, at this time, you're not looking to necessarily have any money to back fund, to back fund this because we have found the money, it does not need to be back funded at this time?
It is not necessary, sir.
Thank you.
Representative Moore.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Let me see if I, right now, you have commitments for three.
No, we have commitments. We have commitments for the four from previous, the budget of last year.
Right.
We have commitments for the 10 that we're discussing today.
Correct. Three are in the process of being hired, but those five of those 10?
Uh, no. Let me just see the right number. And right back here is...
Call a friend.
And I would like to say, thank you, Roy, for volunteering to come up here.
Thank you.
Roy knows all where they are, where they stand. But we, we, I'm really comfortable with the fact that we have commitments from 10 communities already. That's terrific. From the original four, two are on the job and two are waiting a start date.
And you expect...
From the original four. Now, on the...
Let me stop you there.
Yes, sir.
So those two, when you expect those to go on the job, the additional two?
Soon. I don't have the date right here, but soon. They've been selected and they're coming on board. I have to swear them here.
Right. Couple weeks or something along that line?
I would certainly say within a month. It would be my, my best guess. It depends how their community, when their community can let them go and backfill their slot.
Right. And so that takes care of those four?
Yes, sir.
And then the 10 others you have?
We have one already selected, awaiting a start date. Two are waiting approval from their, from their counselors.
Right.
Seven are, have expressed an interest. And that goes from live cities all the way through sheriffs down to smaller communities.
And of those seven, when do you think we would have them all on board as an estimate? I'm not going to hold you to it.
I, my estimate would be, I think we could have all 10 on board if everything goes right in six months. We'll have some very soon and some that will take that long to get their approval from their city councils, get them on board, train them, teach them how to be, even as they happen to be.
Right. Should, should the state, the commissioner, be looking at an additional way to hire MDEA directly?
I, I think if, if I could, no. This system works well. And, and the reason is, the burnout rate for these young men and women is very quick, usually about two years. Their life is so disrupted in that they work it nice, they dress up like hooligans, they smell, they, they have to be out on the streets doing very risky work.
You'd have to describe it to me.
And so the burnout rate for them certainly, because they have no family life.
So then, for those communities who are hesitant because of the financials cost to them, should be, should we be looking at some money for those communities who are willing to let us have those agents to supplement them so they are more willing to let them go?
Well, we, as you know, as I've said, we presently pay them state...
Right.
Police detective salaries. Some of those salaries do not match, especially down south, some of the local police departments.
Right.
However, up to this point, people have recognized how important this is, and those communities will, will help us out.
But I, I have a feeling that one of the reasons it's taking us, let's say, six months to add the other seven is that you have to really look around, ask or beg communities to let someone go. So what I'm asking is, would it make sense for the legislature to consider making money available to those communities in a way that they'd be more willing to make some of those people available to us?
I think any effort in that direction would be, would certainly be examined and, and looked at, yes, sir.
Could you take a look at that? Perhaps you'll be back to us by Friday? I guess is when we'll be talking about this.
Sure.
I know you can do it.
And the budget office will be glad to do this, yes.
But you'll have to come up with the figure. We'll figure the money source, but I'm talking about possibly the policy of doing it.
Right. I'll, I'll have to find out what communities...
Right.
Pay more than what we're willing to offer.
Yeah. I think that, I mean, if we're talking about trying to have an instant impact, I, I think the quicker we can get on, out there, the better we're going to be.
And if I could add, one of the delays is in, aren't the police chiefs, and usually not in the city manager or town manager, but it's in the board of selectmen who have been hired. They need a lot of convincing at times.
But to some degree, they act like legislators. You don't need to comment on that.
I, I like the look on my face needs to know.
Representative Foul.
Thank you. For one, we have your testimony taken to our work session.
Aye.
I noticed it's handled...
It's all in bullet forms. I'll be glad to give you bullets.
That would be perfect. And then the other question I have, because I did read in the paper on the day that this bill came out, the government had money for the 10 agents, and it was coming from the lottery. Having served on the...
It's not from the lottery.
Gaming.
From gambling control.
Gambling control.
Which is different.
State police.
Yes.
But I don't remember anything in that budget that said drug enforcement when I was on the L.A. So I, I mean, that's something I just...
Any other questions for, the, the source of this money and gambling control have to be directed to the budget office.
Okay. So, and I'm sure, I just wanted appropriations, who will be looking at them also. I'm just curious about, you know, when I remember being on that committee, the pieces we looked at, there was enforcement, there was, you know, even trying to get the games. And I realized that that isn't here. I'm questioning, I'm realizing this, because I frustrate you so often when I'm not here. I apologize. So if you have written us money, even if it's just your bullets, can be...
It will, it will be in the form of bullets.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Representative Fran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, Commissioner, for being here. So I just want to recap on some of the numbers. The original budget that the governor put in requested seven new agents. Our biennial budget funded four.
Yes.
You are in the process of hiring, or will have those four on, on board. And now you're saying that there's additional money in your baseline budget, which would be according to this bill, about $1.6 million, that you can self-fund 10 in addition so that there will be 14. And I just assumed that there would be some drug seizure money involved. What happens currently with the drug seizure money that would seem more appropriate than the gambling?
You might use drug seizure money to hire people. That is a law prohibited stat. It's very specific and, and Senator Gostowski and the chief, the Colonel Justice Committee, most of them are up to speed on that. You can only use it, for example, use that money to buy drugs. So we use drug dealers' money to buy drugs. We can do certain overtime with it, because it's very specific what we can do. We can buy certain equipment like wires and, you know, that, that kind of stuff. But we cannot supplant the regular budget. And I'd like to mention that the four MDEA agents, we specifically made those geographical specifics. We needed an MDEA agent in Washington County because we only had one. Can't let these young people go out there and work the streets by themselves. So we had that. We needed another one in Somerset County, to York County. And that's why it took just a little bit longer than what will take us, we have 10, to distribute throughout this state.
From a budgetary perspective, if we are taking $1.6 million from another purpose and we put together a budget with those needs in mind, and there's additional money that's available to us through the settlement that's being proposed in this budget, what, what's the benefit of doing what you suggest versus the way that this bill is written?
As I said to Representative Foul, all those questions need to be directed to the budget office.
Thank you.
Senator, Senator Gostowski.
No, you couldn't go. You're waiting all week for this. Mr. President, thank you for being here today. And I'd like to kind of follow on the lines of Representative Martin's concerns about municipalities. All radio, mostly drug arrests and, and done by the municipalities, caught their officials in, in drug domain that have carried the field drugs. I'm firmly believing they probably want to save credit and work $0.25 an hour, remember what it's like to get in here. But my concern is with municipalities, I'm going to be donating officers to the MDEA because the cost that goes along with that, besides the pay differential, such as if they're going to replace that officer, that officer going through the state academy to train is a large burden that the towns have to look for. The MDA is going to get a good target, they're going to get people to the academy, so they have to employ a few cops along with about 25 other people. So my concern is, is as Representative Martin discussed, trying to alleviate some of this burden on the towns, that that would be a big cost. But also, if we're going to be taking our officers from municipalities in the county, I don't believe we've ever taken them to state police.
That is not correct.
That's not, do take them to state police. I was aware of that.
However, you all know, demanding statute level of state police is critical.
And believe me, this committee understands that one. So I'm just concerned a little bit about our priorities, knowing that a lot of the arrests that are done are done at municipal level. A lot of the arrests that are done are done by the state police on the interstate. And now we're going to be taking some of our brightest to throw to the MDA, and we're going to expect our municipalities to absorb that cost and to bring on those people. And I agree with you, I'm on the bill. It's just that I'd like to get some more clarity on that. And if, as Representative Martin suggests, we might want to look at trying to reverse the municipalities, the communities, some of what they're going to lose, at least for a two-year period, we're going to have to work that together. So that's my comment, but there's also a question there. How, how do you envision that happening?
I don't know. I'm going to put some figures together as Representative Martin asked. And I, but I think the communities, Senator Gostowski, area that says that the, the sum of the whole is greater than the tax. So what happens is, the municipalities and the sheriffs and the communities understand that this drug issue is bigger than anybody in the local community. So sure, they can, they can arrest local people. But to get guys from Lynn and Brooklyn and the kingpins who are establishing the partners and the gang members requires a joint task force that has the ability to cross the border, visit the lands, whatever they have to do. So I think the communities recognize the importance, clearly they recognize the importance of this because we have the 10 already spoken for.
My God. Well, sure. Thank you very much, Representative. Chair. So you just mentioned how the MDA, they can't cross the border if they can't make arrests, but they can cross the border.
They have the time, whereas local police officers don't.
Right. And for their intelligence work, I believe that's one of the leading drivers that created the MDA with the intelligence across state lines. That intelligence work, I think, is the most important, personally, sitting on this committee for so long, that's what I've gotten, that the intelligence work is really the most important. How do you, Director, kind of get our local law enforcement up to date on being able to do those things? Play that role?
Well, part of the, part of the methodology of having MDA agents come from communities is that the end of their time with MDA, their two years, they return to the police departments with the wealth of knowledge, which will answer some of the questions that you suggested. That's another benefit of doing it in this two-year, three-year program. And, and I can speak from experiences as a police chief, when MDA agents returned to the Waterville Police Department, they knew one heck of a lot more about drug, drug intelligence than those that were stated at the city level.
Further questions, Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My mouth is getting dry, so...
I'll try to ask yes or no questions.
Go ahead, Senator.
I just had a couple more questions about the budget part of this commission. And I, and I, if you can't answer these, that's fine.
The answer is going to be you need to direct those to the budget office.
But just in terms of the, the cost per agent, is that something I should direct to the budget office as well, or is that something you're...
Well, no. We submitted a, what we perceived to be the fully encumbered cost of an agent, the first year and the second year. Obviously, the first year is a little bit more because of equipment and other things. But then, they put together the values in your bill, and so yes, you need to direct that to them.
Because it looks like it's about $160,000 per agent in the second year of remit work. I'm just trying to understand the number.
We'll take it.
I'm sorry?
We'll take it.
Well, that's, I, it's, it's $1.6 million in, in the second fiscal year, which stood up a little last time. The other question though is, it sounds, as we were saying, that, and I appreciate the timeframe it takes to get these people on board, to get the local approvals and all, and I think you said probably six months to get...
I think six months for the 10th agent to come on board. We've got some that are ready to come, is within a month.
Thanks, that's what I...
Representative Anno.
Thank you, sir. Any clarification on this?
Yes?
Do you hold these positions open for two years at these police offices? Do you, do you hold these, like, as a town police chief, do they hold these positions open for when these people...
No.
So there's a chance when these people are done their two years with MDA, that they really don't have a position back in town?
No. That, that they go back to the town. It's very seldom, but it would be last one in, first one out, and they would not be, obviously, the last one in. They, they maintain their relationship with their parent organization. If it's a Winslow police officer, he's a Winslow police officer working for MDEA. And when he goes back, it's up to the Winslow department to take him back. Deal with it. The reality is, for example, like, I can only speak for Waterville. We always had a vacancy. So when he came back, that was never an issue. We could send somebody else or nine.
But you had a 32-man police force. Winslow has a six-man police force.
And Winslow, as I understand it, is one of those that has volunteered to provide an MDEA agent?
Great.
It is great.
Yes. No, it is great, except that I will be losing one of my finest, at least by his experience. So we'll be losing one of our, one of our finest. We'll replace him with a reservist who hasn't gone to the academy yet. So we will be putting him through the academy, and then he will have a place on the Winslow force. So my thought is, if this man that we're putting in there in MDA, goes to MDA, which is great, like you say, but we have a person who now is filling the position, and we just put him through the academy, so does that mean we're going to have an additional officer when all is said and done?
I, I can't answer that. That's a, a local decision. I, I can't. Mike Kevner, I know, understands everything. He's a town manager at Winslow.
Ex-police chief, ex-police chief.
Former police chief, former chief deputy. He gets it. I, I'm not sure if your, your concern is...
My, my concern is that there won't be a place for this person to come back.
Okay. Well, I, and that's a question that has to be dealt with at local level.
Yeah.
I can't answer that.
At all levels.
Representative Windsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, thank you for being here.
Sure.
I, I'm re-listening. It appears to me, what you're really saying is that you've already, that funding the, you don't need funding as presented in this bill, and you're going forward regardless of whether this legislation is passed or not. Is that, is that correct?
Very perceptive.
The second thing is, I think, is it, is your experience as a, as a local police chief and others dealing, dealing with, and, and now it's public safety, Commissioner, are you, is it, is your experience that a town that provides a, a, an agent who goes through training, and they have a, there's enough turnover, even the small departments, to ensure that the, the host town really comes out a lot better than they had, had been better trained? Is that what you're going to say?
Absolutely. When that person returns back to the local community, they are so much more adept in, you know, they, they've just learned a lot. I mean, you know, MDEA is a very professional, difficult, risky assignment, and they, yes, they go back better, better equipped to serve their community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Representative Anno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. As you know, this is a comprehensive bill. What, one of the things that I have been not impressed with is the lack of coordination, collaboration, and communication between yourself and other commissioners in relation to a joint strategy in relation to the drug crisis. I understand you're in a silo and you have a specific, you know, number of responsibilities. But as you articulated very articulately to our committee, that you couldn't pick up the phone or email a fellow, to me, department head about this issue, to me, that's concerning. So I guess what I would like, the question I have for you, Commissioner, is what assurances can you give up if this bill passes? And you just said you basically don't need it, so might as well pack up and go home now. But aside from that, if this bill actually passes, what assurances can you give up that you're actually going to communicate to the Department of Health and Human Services and others to have a joint strategy in tackling this issue?
I will leave the second part of this bill, which is the treatment to those subject matter experts that need better discussion.
I'm not talking about the subject matter.
Hey, if you will let me, if you will let me finish speaking. No, sir. I find it sort of insulting that you think that I don't speak to other departments. And that's not correct. And so I will correction on that.
That's what you told our committee.
Okay. My memory must be going out of phase.
Representative Rattler.
I just wanted to remind committee members that we have about 36 people who want to testify before 1 o'clock today. So I, I, I'm not trying to cut off questions, but if you, if you have a question that can wait to your work session, we would ask that you hold it until then. And again, you know, we're not trying to cut off questions, but if it's a question that can wait to the work session as opposed to this public hearing, I would appreciate your holding off so that we can hear from the public, because we have quite a few people who are taking time to be with us today, and we also have a lot of people coming in this afternoon. So, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Attorney General?
Come on down.
Thank you. Good morning. Oops. I forgot.
Thank you. Oops, I have coffee somewhere. I'll read it to you first. Good morning, Senator Lambrou, Representative Rotundo, I'm Janet Mills, Attorney General of State of Maine, and Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, distinguished members of the Committee on Opia and Financial Affairs, and members of the Joint State of Community and Criminal Justice and Public Safety, both of which I have served on, oops.
For not very long.
Soon as they're here.
I'm pleased to be here today to support LR 2599, an Act to Combat Drug Addiction to Enforcement, Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery. I want to thank the presiding officers and the sponsors of this legislation, including the proposal forward and making the bold statement that you've made, by making it the first order of business on the legislative docket. The opiate crisis is touching every community and nearly every family in our state in some way or another. We must respond in a multitude of ways to adequately, adequately respond to the unique challenges they all face, and we must respond now and not wait. The supply of cheap heroin is up, and it's often laced with an even deadlier substance called fentanyl, or acetalfentanil, analog to fentanyl. This is having deadly consequences. Last week, I, um, released the drug overdose numbers through the first nine months of this year, and those figures may paint a very grim picture. Through the first three quarters of the year of 2015, Maine had already exceeded the number of deaths caused by heroin, 71 deaths, or fentanyl, 54 deaths, for both of those substances in all of 2014. Prescription drugs also continue to be a major factor, with 113 deaths through September caused by some prescription drug. In 74% of all cases, the death was caused by a cocktail of multiple drugs. With 174 total deaths just through the end of September, I'm expecting that once all tests have confirmed the toxicology is concluded, we will see between 230 and 250 deaths from overdose of drugs in 2015. That's a, a jump from the previous year, 2014, there were 208 deaths, and in 2014, those deaths, those individuals, those citizens of Maine ranged in age from 18 to 88. The drug epidemic touches every household, every community, every age group, every cohort, socioeconomic cohort of our state. My office deals with child support enforcement, child protection, homicides, drug trafficking cases, and of course, the Office of Chief Medical Examiner. In all of those areas, we are seeing a great increase in the influence of drug abuse, drug addiction, and drug trafficking. Child support cases, where deadbeat parents can't, they won't be because they're busy buying drugs. Child, child protection cases, where a parent is unable to take care of a kid, or is so drugged up that they let a kid die in a bathtub, or roll over on them in a bed, will cause the death of serious bodily injury, serious injury of an infant because of drug addiction and drug abuse. The Attorney General's Office also is responsible for coordinating the prosecution of major drug cases all across the state, and we work closely with Roy McKitty and the MDA task forces to do. In the last budget, the legislature increased the number of drug prosecutors from six to eight, and I have just administered the oath to the first of those two additional prosecutors just yesterday, and we have another one coming onboard within a month. From January through the beginning of December 2015, our drug task force attorneys closed about 850, 850 major drug cases statewide, and about 80% of those were MDA cases, that's a jump from the previous years. About 550 of those total cases were just three prosecutorial districts, York County, Cumberland County, and Andrewsburg and Oxford County. Each of those districts having nearly 200 cases apiece, major, mostly felony drug trafficking cases. We're seeing increased caseloads along the I-95 corridor in Canterbury and Penobscot Counties as well. We're focusing our efforts along that corridor. But no matter how you measure it, the drug epidemic in Maine is raging, and the demands are urgent, and they demand a comprehensive response. It's true, we cannot arrest our way out of this crisis, I've heard that said many times, but it's also true that we can't get out of this crisis without arrests. Profit motivated people, some with unfamiliar addresses, and others born and bred in our own communities, are willing conduits for illegal drugs. They find willing business partners and customers almost everywhere they turn in our communities. In recent days alone, law enforcement agencies across the state have disrupted some major trafficking networks. While we need to do more for interdiction of drugs, we must also begin the long effort of curbing the voracious demand, the appetite that people of all ages have shown for opiates and deadly substances. When a, while a person addicted to opiates tells us that they have, they are ready to make that change, we just can't tell them to come back next week. Maybe we find some help for you. Detaining them for a few days in jail, and turning them loose on the street will help, will not support them either, not help them without a fabric of support, detox beds, long-term treatment. That is an urgent, urgent need, I hear that all over the state. This legislature, this Appropriations Committee, appropriated monies for drug courts, additional monies for drug court in Bangor just last year, and additional monies to support the funding that was being taken away from drug courts because of federal grants drying up. I applaud your, your move that, that it was included in the budget last summer. Thank you for doing that. At the same time, drug courts need a place to send people to dry out, to get help, to get medication assisted treatment, which by and large is one of the biggest influences of recovery in the immediate sense. But for now, we also need to know, to let people know, if traffickers come here to sell drugs, or sell in our communities, they will get caught. They will go to prison. This legislation will help ensure that that happens sooner rather than later. People battling addiction, and the families desperate to get them help, must know there will be help available when they need it, so they can get back to living productive lives, and not abandoning their children and families. This legislation will help ensure that help is available sooner rather than later. Regarding the grants for local law enforcement in jails, it's founded Part B of this LR, it is my intention to...